Okay, let's call the meeting to order for Aurora Public Renewal and take roll call. Please.
Chair Legere.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Burzens.
Here.
Commissioner Gruber.
Here.
Commissioner Hiltz.
Here.
Commissioner Johnston.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Morio.
Present.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Okay, the first item on business is the approval of the minutes of April 1, 2019. Any other corrections?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Roth, second by Commissioner Burzens to approve the minutes of April 1, 2019. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Next item is the 4A.
Go ahead.
Oh, may I? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I know we're in this, so maybe it starts after that about our executive session. Is that after?
Go ahead.
Okay, this is pretty straightforward. Tonight, we're asking you to approve a cooperation agreement with Aurora Public Schools. This agreement relates to the Alameda Center Urban Renewal Area. This is immediately west of the municipal complex in the city center park. Back in February, the board approved a public finance and redevelopment agreement, which provides tax increment financing assistance to the park side at City Center Project. That agreement was predicated on APS allowing the use of 75% of their mills in support of the project. The remaining 25% of their mills would be returned to them. So, the cooperation agreement that you're looking at tonight would formalize that share-back percentage and would allow AURA to begin forwarding funds to APS. So, any questions?
Any questions regarding this item? There are none, I entertain a motion.
Chair, who's for item 4A?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Burzens to approve again item 4A. Any discussion? There are no, we'll call for a question on 4A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Any other matters that we need to bring up? Looks like none. Meeting is adjourned. Excellent, we just picked up four minutes.
Can we take a break now?
No breaks. Okay, we'll move right into the study session agenda. And I'm gonna start with the executive session update, and I will have the attorney Dan Brodman talk about one of the items and all. Mention the other two. So, the other two, we had a discussion about development incentives, and that item will move forward to a study session for further discussion. Actually, P E D committee. And then, there was a litigation update regarding a litigation matter that the city attorney's office is working on, and council got updated on that litigation matter. And the last item on oil and gas, I want to have Dan Brodman update.
And again, there are two matters. One is an operator agreement regarding well sites. The other is an operator agreement regarding the central gas facility for access. The operator agreement for well sites is being brought forward. It came to study session. It is being brought forward to the regular meeting with a waiver of reconsideration, much as the ConocoPhillips agreement is tonight. The operator agreement for the central gas facility is being dual-listed, both for study session and then for the regular meeting. Again, I believe that there was a request for a waiver of reconsideration on that matter as well. So, there would be one reading, one formal reading for both items, and then they would become final on that meeting in June 24th.
Councilmember Johnston.
So, with the extraction access operator agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, at our last meeting, we told staff to negotiate the damages provision.
Correct.
And that was done. But, we never came back and said, "Let's vote to have the waiver of reconsideration attached to the access extraction." So, if we'd like to do that, and people can raise their hands publicly here, for one reading, I would like that done. Because we didn't vote on a waiver of reconsideration for the extraction operator agreement, which would only require one reading.
So, let's ask a question here. So, the operator agreement, there's one on the agenda tonight that's well-publicized for Conoco. My understanding is that this access agreement is gonna be essentially identical.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, the question for council is, how many here are in favor of, is the term dual-listing?
Correct.
So, it's gonna be listed on the study session and the formal agenda.
For the central gas facility.
For the central gas facility.
Okay, say I'm still.
Okay, there are actually two. One is an operator agreement for the well sites.
So, your question was regarding the gathering or well sites?
Well, I'll first focus on the well sites, and then I'll kinda wanna mix up the two.
Okay, so, let me try again. We're talking about the well sites. The well site operator agreement.
And the well site operator agreement had that provision of the damages that we were concerned about. So, we said, "Staff, please negotiate that." Staff negotiated it, but we never voted on a waiver of reconsideration that would require only one reading to go forward to the floor. And I'm asking for that vote, so the public can see this is that.
All right, let me try to frame that in a different way, 'cause I see some head shaking. So, on tonight's agenda, we have a very well-publicized Conoco Oil and Gas Operator Agreement. Everybody's familiar with that. I'm sure we've got hundreds of emails and snail mails and everything else. So, what we're talking about is essentially that same agreement for a different company would be on the agenda the 24th of June.
With a waiver of reconsideration.
I'm getting there. It'd be on the agenda the 24th of June, it would be listed on study session?
No.
No.
It will only be on the regular, the well site operator agreement is only going to the regular session.
Do that. I don't know what the question is then. What you're asking us to raise our hands and say?
Whether we should have a waiver of consideration with it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, we had a discussion in exec session, are we able to talk about exec session like this? Just for clarification.
So, we're addressing it now. So, this is public, so this is.
Go to the floor.
I just wanna make sure.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm confused by the interlinkage of the consideration of the item and the reference to more than one reading, a resolution. My understanding is a resolution is a one-reading item. So, the waiver of reconsideration, I don't know if you meant to imply would somehow wipe out a second reading. That's not the protocol.
So, what is the waiver of reconsideration for? I thought the waiver of reconsideration was to have one reading.
No, well, on a resolution, you'd have just one reading. It's to say that it will affective at the adjournment of the council meeting tonight. That's my understanding.
So, let me ask a question of the attorney Dan Brodman. So, if a resolution is final upon the vote, you know, never a situation where council can undo that?
No, you can actually reconsider an item at the very next meeting.
That's what the waiver's about.
Which is the waiver, why you're waiving reconsideration. So, you can have a waiver at the next council meeting, but that, the waiver, to get a reconsideration, you actually have to have new information provided.
Okay. Why are we attaching a waiver?
Because it would eliminate your opportunity to reconsider an item. So, for instance, tonight, you have a resolution or an operator agreement with ConocoPhillips. If you waive the reconsideration, it will only be for tonight. This will be the final reading, that's it. If you don't have that waiver attached, you could vote on the item again, but you could vote on reconsidering it at the next meeting on June 24th. So, this eliminates that opportunity of any reconsideration on the 24th.
Yes, and that is what I have an issue with. I mean, we could always be privy to more information, why would we give that up? Or just to accommodate one entity?
Councilmember Bergen.
Well, I don't understand why you wouldn't. I mean, the Conoco one is happening, so you're, why would extraction not? It's the same operator agreement that Conoco has. So, I just don't understand why you would then want to call it back up.
Go ahead.
I did not support having the waiver with Conoco. I do not support it having the waiver with extraction. If new information comes up, as a council, we should be able to see that information and not rush it even faster. So, I think instead of exec session, the public should see around the table who wants that opportunity, if there's more information to visit it, or who wants the opportunity to say, "Nope, we're gonna have that waiver." And I think the public should see that vote.
So, let me ask a question of the city manager, Jim Colmley. Is this information about this agreement's gonna go up on the website, I presume, at some point?
The operator agreement.
The operator agreement, is there already with the changes that have recently been negotiated?
Yes.
Okay. And the gas gathering, that's already up there too with the final?
No, because that's not scheduled till, until 24th.
We're talking about tonight, and so I'm asking, is there a way to get it on there sooner?
Do we have, yes, would you put it up there?
It's up there.
I took notes, that it said, "Public comment will be available on June 13th," so that it can be reviewed.
Okay.
That's next one.
That's what we're shooting for, then, June 13th. If we can get it up sooner, can you do that? So, back to the question of how many are in favor of having the waiver of reconsideration, is that the correct term, on the 24th, for the access oil and gas operator agreement, which is the same as what we're doing tonight, hearing tonight for Conoco? Raise your hand if you support the waiver of reconsideration. C3, I see 6. It looks like 7 now. That's enough, put it on the agenda that way. Then, the oil and gas gathering facility, we also have an operator agreement with that that's moving forward to the 24th. And is that dual-listing, is the proper term for that one?
So, it would be dual-listed and with a waiver of reconsideration. That's the proposal.
Discussion on that item. Councilmember Johnston.
The central gathering facility, which most people have never even heard of until now, is in Ward 2. To have it go from study to the floor without any information discussion, yes, there will be something on the website, but again, people aren't notified about this. It's on the website, we keep saying it's on the website. People aren't notified about this at all. They're notified after we approve it, which it's already approved. I, again, am gonna ask for a vote of having it dual-listed with the waiver of reconsideration.
Councilmember Bergen.
And the central gathering facility is in order for the oil operator to produce water, right?
That's my understanding.
To pipish, to pipe the water without using the trucks. So, I thought there was a discussion of the reason that would need it to be dual-listed was so that that process could happen, so that we're not polluting the air, so that we could pipe it.
And we're discussing that again.
Okay.
Councilmember Grober.
The central gathering facility is set up, we started earlier than that. Council asked the oil companies when we first started to discuss the concept of an operator agreement, is there a way for you not to use trucks? Is there a way, we don't want the trucks driving in Aurora. We don't want gas trucks, we don't want fuel trucks, oil trucks, and we don't want water trucks. Is there a way for you to pipe all of that? And the negotiations became very complex. We were covering, which is why a lot of the information was held in executive session, because there was, land had to be purchased. There were multiple issues with landowners, there were multiple issues with well sites in order to get to a yes. So, then, extraction came back and said, "Yes, we can do it, and what we will do is we will pipe gas, liquid petrochemicals, and water, which comes from the ground to the central location, and then from there, we'll pipe it and move it on, so that we won't have trucks in the city." So, the central facility that we're talking about right now is an integral part of the overall list of wants that the city asked for, that the city pretty much demanded, and that's what we're bringing forward.
Councilmember Johnston.
They are not talking today about the validity of a central gathering facility. My point is, we are talking about, do we go to study and dual-list it straight to a floor with, again, an issue that has extreme public interest? So, you know, it may be unanimous that we support the central gathering facility. I'm not talking about that, so I wanna be clear. Talking about, do we dual-list it? And I don't, I think unless it's like an emergency, then we should consider a dual-listing, otherwise, that's a bad way to do business, and it looks bad.
Okay, and we're discussing that right now. There was a hand over here, Councilmember Hilton.
Well, I think Councilmember Johnson got it, it's because this is such an integral part of operations, that we need to make sure that we're going through the public process that we have set out by going through full study session and the floor, but on different nights. I don't see the value in dual-listing it. If it's such an important, integral component that had a lot of complexities and outside actors, then that just further bolsters the reason why we need to actually go through the normal public process. I don't think a two-week difference between meetings is going to make or break an oil and gas company's ability to conduct operations, especially because my understanding is that, are we doing the central gathering on two different readings, so it'll still go to a second reading, or are we dual-listing it on a single night? Because I would much rather see us move the well site operators agreement back one meeting, and then go through the study session, and then a floor process on separate nights, rather than front-load it, double up, and take away the input of the public and have their ability on something that is, as Councilmember Johnson said, of extreme public interest. I don't think that two weeks is going to make or break an industry's ability to do business in Aurora, and like she said, we may pass it unanimously, but why remove the public's ability to participate in the process?
Councilmember Bergen.
I thought I had heard, though, that the reason that they wanted it dual-listed quickly was for the benefit of the city, so that we don't use the trucks, so that they can start with the pipeline. So, we're just delaying the, that's what I heard, that we're delaying the pipeline, therefore, they will have to use trucks. So, in the interest of the public and public, you know, air quality, I think that's what I heard, that it was for that benefit.
Councilmember Grober.
Again, we are talking about, the central facility is integral with the well operator agreement. They're side-by-side, and there's been a push to delay this for six months, and this is just a further effort to delay. They're tightly coupled, and that's why we're bringing them together as closely as we can.
Councilmember Johnston.
In terms of the timing, once the operator agreement is approved by access, they still have to get approval by the COGCC, and there is a backlog. So, again, if we just move that a couple of weeks, that's not gonna be like, "Oh, we've been waiting." There still has to be the state process. And in terms of a delay, wouldn't there be a delay when it was first public, May 20th? I mean, it's the opposite of a delay.
Councilmember Bergen.
Because we're also talking about dual-listing that particular item with a waiver of reconsideration. So, one date period is when it is dual-listed for a conversation, a vote on the conversation, and then it's effective that same day, when normally, that doesn't happen. I mean, it's rare, in my experience on council, that that happens all on the same date, one singular date.
Other comments? Councilmember.
I'm still struggling with why not move it forward? It's for the benefit. So, I don't, I guess I'm just struggling to understand, like, what's the damage of not getting it done? It's what the city wanted to have done.
Well, let me see if I can summarize, because we've heard a lot of back and forth, and now we're starting to repeat. So, the benefit is, you get more public input. The benefit in moving it forward quickly is that you get it done quicker, and the sooner they can take this wastewater and other products through a pipe instead of a truck, it is beneficial for the city and its residents. So, that's the difference. And I don't know, what's the next meeting after June 24? Does someone have a council calendar handy? So, is it the next Monday, the following? So, it's, if it were, if it were not dual-listed, and it went to study session and then to formal agenda, it would essentially be a one week delay. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Got the numbers right? Am I missing anything here? Okay, so, it would be a one-week delay to not dual-list it. We could still have waiver of reconsideration if council had noted that. But, quite frankly, I, you know, I don't normally jump in on these, but I don't think a week's gonna be the end of the world.
Right.
If we ended up having a study session at the next meeting and the following meeting with formal agenda. So, Councilmember Hilton.
Can we just, I'm assuming you're gonna ask that question?
I'm gonna ask the question, we're gonna raise hands.
Can we break the waiver of reconsideration apart from the separating them on the different?
We have two questions, we'll ask, how many want, I'm gonna actually flip it toward the other side and say, "Let's just ask the question now, we can ask more questions Q and A after." How many wanna go ahead and not dual-list it, but have it on study session next meeting, and one week later, have it on formal agenda, instead of dual-listing? And then, we'll come back on the waiver of reconsideration question. So, if you don't wanna do that, if you want it done immediately without that one-week delay, don't raise your hand. Is that clear?
Right.
Okay, so, the question is, how many want to go ahead and list it on study session and then formal agenda on the 1st of July meeting? Raise your hand high if you'd like to do it that way.
Separate.
Two separate nights.
Two separate hearings, yes. Okay, that's not enough, so, it looks like it's gonna be dual-listed. Then, we'll ask the question of how many want to have a waiver of reconsideration on that item for the central gathering facility operating agreement? Raise your hand if you wanna see an operator agreement, I'm sorry, a waiver of reconsideration on the operator agreement.
Raise them high, so.
Raise them high. Wave at the camera, everybody. One, two, three, four, five, six. I see seven now. This Councilmember Grober's hand coming up at the end, so, for the record, there's seven that say waiver of reconsideration. This'll be on the agenda June 24th. It'll be dual-listed with a waiver of reconsideration. Other discussion? Okay. And that was all under executive session updates, so let's move on now to other mayor reports. I wanted to report on, I actually went on two conferences, went to two conferences in May, and I'm gonna turn this over to Councilmember Grober to report on one of those, we both attended. But, the one I wanna talk about is the National Security Forum that I attended. It was held at the Air War College in Montgomery, Alabama, at Maxwell Air Force Base. And I understand that Colonel Grober's a graduate of that, is that correct? Along with many other illustrious military leaders. It was, this was a session where they bring in people from across the United States, city leaders, and elected officials, and business leaders, and they basically talk about what's going on in the world, and issues of security and cybersecurity and things like that. So, some interesting takeaways that I learned about there, and one is that there is, in fact, Russian interference in the United States. I mean, we see all the hype and, you know, stories in the news about this is happening and that's happening. What they do know is actually happening is that the Russians are actually trying to, on election integrity, for example, what they're doing, not so much interfering with the election itself, but using social media to make you believe that your election was not fair. So, it doesn't matter if you were a Republican and you lost, or a Democrat and you lost, they go in and try to stir that up to make it sound like the election wasn't fair. And then, what that does is it turns Americans against each other, and we're fighting each other on issues. So, they take all of these hot social issues, and political issues, and various different issues that we argue about in the United States, and they create animosity between people right here in the United States. And so, that's kinda Russia's way of disrupting a nation, one example of it. Another goal they have is to destroy the media's credibility. You know, we've heard a lot about fake news, and this news and that news, but the bottom line is, they're using social media to try and influence what happens here in the United States. They also use it to undermine our NATO allies, and there was an example of, I think it was a couple of years ago, there was a claim that, you know, there was a rape on some base, a NATO base, and it turned out that that information was completely social media-generated, and it wasn't even real. And yet, it created all kinds of instability in, you know, the ability of the NATO forces to operate. So, that was on the Russia interference. So, China is more, what I learned there is that China's more into stealing intelligence, stealing personal information. You know, they showed the screen of all the literally, probably billions of personal pieces of information that have been stolen or breached already, and they're using that data to just gather information about, you know, people that live here in the United States. And I had a concern about, you know, satellite, you know, are we gonna go to war in space and start blowing up satellites? Actually, that, I was put at ease by that, because what I learned there is that China knows that if they blow up our satellites, they're blowing up their own. In other words, they use, they use what we use for mapping, and satellite, and surveillance, and all that. So, if you blow things up in space, it creates all this junk that destroys everything else that's up there. So, nobody I talked to at the conference was concerned about that type of thing. It was more the Chinese or the Russian, not the Russians so much, but the Chinese hacking into our computer systems and potentially disrupting satellite operation. And, so anyway, that's the layman's takeaway on that. I actually felt really good about how much is being done. We hear a lot about the, you know, the tweets, you know, tweets from the White House, and, you know, the Republicans, Democrats, and all this junk you read in newspapers. But, what I came away with is that the military folks that are watching over the globe and watching over the United States and do this stuff every day, to them, that's just background noise. They don't pay any attention to that, 'cause their mission is to keep us safe. So, I was, I thought it was a great conference.
Sounds interesting.
And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Grober to talk about the ICSC retail conference we attended.
Thank you. First, before we go into that, let me explain just a little bit, just review a little bit about what retail revenue means to the city. 55% of our income coming into the city, into the annual operations budget, comes from retail sales tax. That's from McDonald's, from Ross, from Sears, all those different stores. That $200 million is very, very important. That funds most of our operating budget for the police, and the fire department, and our courts. Not all of it, but it makes a big impact. Where things get, become difficult for the city is, is that if the citizens of Aurora choose to eat in another to eat in another jurisdiction, another town, or they choose to shop in another town, that's revenue that we will not see and that's revenue that will not go to our police department and will hurt us. So, the purpose of the ICSC, the International Shopping Center Convention, and the reason that the city spent so much time and effort going there and having a great presentation was because of the fact that if we can draw more businesses to Aurora, if we can have places where the Aurora citizens want to eat, the Aurora residents want to eat, where they want to shop, that's very much in our benefit. As a matter of fact, that's absolutely crucial to the success of the city. So, the city set up a booth there and at that show, there are thousands of people. They have landowners, they have developers, they have brokers, they have all the restaurants, they have all the stores. And the city had over 200 meetings with those organizations in order to sell Aurora, in order to convince them to come to Aurora, in order to show them what's happening in the city, how exciting it is, what potential there is and what an opportunity it is for those stores and those restaurants to come here. So, it was a very successful meeting. Like I said, there are nearly 200 meetings and there are follow-up meetings, and I believe the city will be very pleased as deals are made in relatively near future and we begin seeing more stores and restaurants coming in.
Any questions on those two updates? Okay, hearing none. I have one other update I wanted to give, and that's for Denver Meadows. So, we all know that the Denver Meadows zoning hearing is on tonight. So, there were some, there was at least one closing that happened over the weekend, and the email that I sent about midweek last week was an update on roughly four families that are kind of in some type of an agreement to move at some point. And there's, of those four, there's actually five now, they all have plans to be out of the park by a date certain, probably within that extended time period. And there's two families that didn't want to accept the payment agreement amount. So, those are undetermined as to what will happen there. And we can talk about that more tonight if a question comes up. But the bottom line is every family has been communicated with, and other than those two, there's a plan for every single one of them as to what's going to happen on the settlement of their mobile home. And the two that are undetermined, the money is still sitting there, ready for them and available to them, but we'll have further discussions, you know, starting tomorrow regarding those two families. So, we'll talk about that more tonight, I'm sure. And with that issue update, is there anything else, anything that council members would like to bring up to the floor at this point? Okay, seeing none, consent calendar items 2A through F, are those ready to move forward to the floor? I don't see anybody. Oh, council member Dunn.
I just want to point out, we have the Oil and Gas Advisory Commission appointment. And since I attempted my failed attempts at having more citizen members, and I know Tom Tobiasen has served our city in a great capacity in many different roles, but he does not live in a area that's impacted by fracking, and that was the only application we received. So, you know, we just haven't had this robust outreach, you know, with an issue that's so important to have one application. I would like to see if we could, see if we could get more applications, more outreach on that. In terms of, he and former Revell Commissioner Page did serve on an organization that was a pro-drilling organization, and they're both representing the citizen role and not living in impacted fracking areas. It's becoming, as I anticipated it would be, without outlining it in a resolution, it's becoming just an industry-led commission that meets every two months. So.
Councilmember Reynolds.
I also would like to point out that it might be time to even look at reconsidering the role of the Oil and Gas Commission since we're not utilizing them in the public input process or in the process. I know we've gotten some emails about it, and I mentioned it last time, but we're not even going to the Oil and Gas Commission for their advice on major oil and gas matters. So, it might also just be time to be looking at the commission as a whole and maybe revamping or restructuring or re-outlining or just having a conversation about what their role's going to be under what we, whatever it is that we adopt in the next couple of weeks, what their role looks like moving forward and having that conversation too.
Councilmember Bergen.
So, I did reach out to the Oil and Gas Commission because I know several council members had requested that in the last few weeks. They were willing to sit down and have a meeting and actually an emergency meeting to discuss the operator agreement. However, they didn't, they were missing a service, what do you call it, service right owner representative? And they have one vacancy there, so it looks like we're trying to fill one of the vacancies tonight with this appointment or consent calendar item. So, anyway, since they have three people that sit on that part of the committee, one is a vacancy and then the other person is on a three-month sabbatical, so they were not able to do a quorum based on the meeting that they were going to have. Therefore, it didn't make any sense because they couldn't give input because they didn't have a quorum. So, I just, I think it's important that we, you know, fill the vacancies. We won't be able to get input, they'll never have a quorum without that service right owner.
Councilmember Watts.
Just a question in reference to, the appointments are based on people who submitted an application to be on the Oil and Gas Commission. If there's this huge interest, who are the applications to be on the commission? I think that's the reality. If a person submits, their name is reviewed and they then may be selected. If you do not submit an application, then you are not, I don't know, maybe there's no interest, as much interest as we're hearing there is.
And that could be, but council can accept or reject any applicant. So, I think the question at this point is, does council want to hold this up and try to find someone different for that appointment, or is it ready to move to the floor? How many want to move that item to the floor, the appointment for oil and gas? Want me to repeat the question?
Yes.
Is the oil and gas appointment ready to move forward to the floor? Raise your hand if it's ready to move forward to the floor.
Because I want to.
That's four, that's six. Okay. You're confused?
No, no, I just want to fill the one vacancy that needs to be.
Yeah, because there's two vacancies. And one is the service and then one is the citizen member. And I'm saying there hasn't been outreach.
Let's load it up. Ask the question again. Okay, how many want to move the surface owner forward for appointment? That's Justin Wells. Raise your hand, raise it high. Okay, that's almost everybody. Then the second question, how many want to move Tom Tobiasen forward as a citizen member? Go ahead.
Just on, I don't know for the new council members procedurally, if we were to move Tom Tobiasen forward, you're still able as a council member to recommend someone else on the floor, correct?
No, we've never done that before. Some of them are not on the agenda. Just pull the name out of the hat and put them on there.
Well, I'm saying if someone approached somebody on council who wanted to be on the committee, got their application and couldn't, couldn't that person by that next meeting be recommended?
I don't know the answer to that. Do our rules allow that?
Well, I did it.
Which is the rule?
Did they have an application?
Oh.
I think once we approve this, we're pretty much set for this one, these two.
Well, we haven't approved it yet.
Right, but if we do, I don't know, just.
Okay, so.
Card, not that.
You want to speak to that, Mr. Gruber?
Mr. Mayor, once we receive an application, we vet it and make sure it meets the requirements for the position. And then from there, it kind of depends on the specifics of the application. For this one, though, there'd be no reason we couldn't report it to you as soon as we could, as soon as we vet it. So, so once we get it, we can get it to you as quickly as possible for the next meeting.
Councilmember Johnson.
So, does that mean the application process is still open?
Yeah, but it'll actually be two more coming up next month.
Two more coming up next month as well. So, yeah, so we're still collecting applications at this time.
Opening. Right, but we only have one citizen application, and that was Mr. Tobiasen.
Right. And I guess I was just asking for more.
So, let's go back to the question of how many want to support moving Tom Tobiasen's appointment, move toward, forward to the floor as the citizen member of that. So, raise your hand. Raise them high so the camera can see it. One, two, three, four, five, that's six. So, that moves forward. Okay, then the rest of the consent calendar, are those ready to move forward? Anyone object? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item 3A, marijuana ordinance update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is to provide a proposed marijuana ordinance update. I did provide the significant items that I felt were important in this ordinance update in your packet, but most of all that it was because of the medical marijuana that was on the ballot in 2018 that prompted this to move forward. So, I can go through each one of those if you wish, or I can take questions if you have any of them for the, there are about five different items on there.
You want to give like a vital overview of the highlights?
Absolutely. We propose to incorporate the applicable sections of the state constitution, statutes, rules and regulations into the city ordinance by reference. AMED currently follows these state guidelines except for Aurora's rules regarding time, place, manner and number. And by using this reference, the city would not have to amend our ordinance every time the state would make a change. Marijuana ordinances can be found across five code sections, and these chapters are updated appropriately in the draft. In 2018, the voters approved a ballot question allowing medical marijuana cultivations and product manufacturing facilities to operate in Aurora. The proposed ordinance change would provide guidance to the local licensing authority to issue, regulate and enforce the specified types of medical marijuana licenses. Staff also provides, proposes to remove the point system, I think that was back here, remove the point system used in awarding the stores. The approved 24 stores have all been issued using the criteria and the associated points. By not including the points in the code, the process is less prescriptive and staff can react more quickly to what council's wishes were and be more administratively flexible. The industry and its regulations have changed over the past five years, and this process may need to look very different than what it did before if we need to bring back the competitive process. Staff continues to use the criteria that council gave us to review for new owners. This also provides a refund for a portion of the marijuana operating fee if the license is not granted. The ordinance stated that the operating fee was not, was non-refundable, but in practice we actually did. We received $15,000 for the applications, and if they did not receive it, we returned, we kept $2,500 of that to cover our costs for the review. And the rest of the changes are basically general administrative cleanup. So, are there any questions on those?
Councilmember Richardson.
Yeah, this is going to be snarky, but ad hoc committee, the words ad hoc reminds me of 15-year temporary fire stations. Is it time for council to de-hock this committee? I mean, we have so much fun spending this marijuana money. Should it be a permanent committee? And the next council member who leaves this room, I'm going to appoint them to the next Rules Committee, and maybe they can look at it. We've been calling this ad hoc, how long?
Six years.
Yeah, well, this is pretty.
I think it's ad hoc too because it only meets when it's needed.
Oh, but, well, I have a different interpretation. I think we should make it permanent.
Councilmember Gruber.
Could you tell me how many marijuana stores are operating in Aurora? How many are authorized? And how many grow facilities we have? And how many grow facilities are now looking to come to Aurora because now you can have medical marijuana grow facilities?
We have 24 stores that are approved and operating currently, so they've all been issued a maximum amount. We have 22 cultivations that we have operating. Some of them have said that they would be interested in doing the medical marijuana. I have not heard of any others that wish to come to Aurora to provide medical marijuana. I just haven't heard anybody new come to the city to ask for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergen.
You said 22, we have 22 cultivation facilities?
That's correct.
I never knew that.
Oh, wait a minute. It's 17. I'm sorry, it's 22 manufacturers. I apologize.
Okay, so, under the new criteria, though, it's, for zoning purposes, they're still in the industrial zoning area?
That is correct. We're keeping them the same as the retail, and they can locate if they want. And so, these operations could split their business wherever they are currently and have medical on one side, retail. You really don't need a physical separation because they're by tags. And so, those tags would tell which is medical or which is in retail.
But they can't locate near a retail marijuana store. You're saying that.
They, no, because that's, well, they could because stores can go into the industrial areas as well.
Oh, okay, but they, okay, but the reverse, they can't go into near residential.
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
So, I just had a question just about the model. So, we, they cultivate the medical marijuana, and then they're able to sell in jurisdictions that do medical marijuana, so we wouldn't get any of the tax base at all? Because they could do, they could go and sell it to Colorado Springs and Denver.
That's correct.
Okay, and so, they could sell it to that, so we, who, would those jurisdictions get the tax?
They, yes, because ours would be a wholesale sale to the different jurisdictions. And so, whoever they sell to, they would get the regular tax. There's not a special marijuana tax.
I know that we didn't vote for it, but I was just wondering if there was something.
And we wouldn't be getting any excise tax either if they do cultivate medical. It's prohibited by statute.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Gruber.
When we debated this earlier about whether or not we should allow medical grow and medical, not only medical grow, but medical production of, I guess, medical medicine in that case, the idea was that having the facilities in Aurora provides jobs and property taxes. And those are the two things that we looked at. Is that the way you remember?
That is correct. And we had some current operators that were very interested because that opens up a new market for them. We may not be able to get the money for the retail, for the medical sales, but we'll be able to keep them here because they do want to do medical as well. They've had to turn down quite a few customers from what I understand.
Other questions? Councilmember Bergen.
Okay, maybe I wasn't listening. So, on the medical marijuana that can co-locate next to the retail, can't get an excise tax? Is that what you said, we cannot?
Correct. I'm sorry.
Well, so we just have like all these additional, I would see it as competition for the retail, which then make, and retail is where we get our tax revenue from. So, wouldn't that possibly decrease the revenue that we get if it's competition for the, people get around this?
I'm not sure I quite understand this question.
Are you discussing selling of the medical marijuana? That was not approved by.
Oh, in the balance question.
Thank God, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Other questions? Okay, seeing none, is this ready to move forward to the agenda?
I guess so.
Anyone object? Okay. Next item would be hemp in Aurora.
I want to emphasize when I go through this that when I say industrial, or hemp or industrial hemp, they're interchangeable. So it's the same thing that I'm talking about. And I'm sure that you've heard about CBD derived from hemp being added to a variety of foods, tinctures, lotions, et cetera. And they're being sold almost anywhere imaginable, from a big box to the retail sales. This is a fast-moving industry which has been around for some time, and since the passing of the 2018 Farm Bill, making it federally legal, it has caused another gold rush, pretty much. Innovators are jumping at the opportunity to create new products now that the problem is there are very few, but the problem is that there are very few and loose regulations in place. The questions are abounding. What is the risk? What should be regulated? If so, how many? And who should make those regulations? So first of all, what is hemp? We've all seen this definition. It's the cannabis, and it's anything that's less than 3.3 tenths percent. Which one of those is hemp and which one of those is marijuana? Would you be able to tell? The one on, on that side is the marijuana, and this one is the hemp. This is the hemp.
I was correct.
I took these pictures, and when we had an operation, I was drying some hemp in the city, and you couldn't tell. It smell, look, everything is the same. So what are their differences? Not much hereditarily. Both come from the same plant species, cannabis, sativa L. However, many years of breeding and manipulation has resulted in the emergence of two varieties, one for medical, medicinal, and spiritual purposes, and other for agricultural and industrial uses. The flowering tops and the leaves contain the psychoactive elements and the THC content, and the hemp uses the seeds and fibers from the stalk. The physical differences are marijuana tended, marijuana tends to be shorter and wider, and the hemp is tall and narrow in its physique. So why are they not considered one in the same legislatively? Because marijuana is a horticultural crop grown for the THC content and being federally illegal, while hemp is an agricultural product, or a crop that is grown for seed and fiber, which is now federally legal. So how did we get there? First of all, let's look at Colorado law. The passing of Amendment 64 in 2012 included its own hemp definition, and it separated from the marijuana definition, and it also said, "Let's regulate this separately from marijuana." So then you go through 2013 to 2018, and you can see various bills are passed through the state legislature, and it seems like they're setting the stage for this industry. In 2019, we're all aware of the two bills that passed, but they're not signed by the governor yet, as of last I looked today. And that updates the Colorado law to align the, our laws with the 2018 Farm Bill and authorizing local governments to regulate the storage, extraction, processing, or manufacturing of hemp and hemp products as long as it does not conflict with state laws. And notice that this does not include the growing of it. This is only the manufacturing and storage. So let's look at the federal law. There's the 2014 bill, or Farm Bill, that authorized the hemp research. And now we have the 2018 Farm Bill that makes hemp federally legal. Okay, so what is that going to mean to us? Allows the states to create hemp-growing regulations as long as includes THC testing, keeping track of where it's grown, and effective disposal if necessary. Now, this is only the growing. We have to remember that hemp is, is in two parts. You have the growing piece, and then you also have the processing piece. It also removes hemp from the Controlled Substances Act if it's less than 0.3 percent and leaves marijuana Schedule I drug. And it charges the U.S. Department of Agriculture with creating national hemp, hemp regulations. And the USC, and this I think is kind of funny, the USDA has one year to study the progress within the 42 states that have hemp program and determine the economic viability of production and sale of hemp and report it back to Congress. They've got one year to do this. It also bans hemp cultivation for people that have a drug felony within the last 10 years. Let's see. It also, it largely guarantees movement from state to state and can be imported and exported the same as corn or soybeans. We've seen that there's been some issues with that as far as the plant moving around the state because they, there's no way to test that. Testing out in the field is very, very difficult right now, and that's really the only way you can tell the difference. It also gives states, let's see, this is what it doesn't do. It doesn't provide states guidelines in this about regulating hemp manufacturing or processing, and it doesn't guarantee interstate commerce for products containing CBD. If you've heard, the CBD products are being taken off the shelf in California because they're following the federal rules. And so it does not limit the U.S. Food and Drug Administration Authority to ban CBD from foods, drugs, and cosmetics. And it doesn't explain how guaranteeing the interstate commerce from hemp products affects the FDA ability to limit CBD use. And so this is, it's, it's, it's very gray. We don't know where, you know, what we can actually hang our hats on. And what we know from the states, from the state's side, what we know about that is that the Colorado Department of Agriculture regulates the hemp growth. And growers must register with the CDA, and they provide planting and harvesting reports. And the CDA will go out and test the, the product in the field. And if, and if it does test hot, then it must be destroyed. And local jurisdictions are cautioned not to prohibit the growing of hemp. I know we've had some questions about, can it be grown here? The Department of Ag says they caution against saying prohibited. Now, we probably can say where it should, could be grown, but as far as flat-out saying, no, you cannot grow hemp, they really prohibit, they really caution against that. And they're not concerned with the odor. They don't care, I mean, they say it's out in the open and it's not going to smell. We all know that probably isn't going to be true. I mean, it will be, I think you'll be able to hear, to smell it. Okay, what do we know about the state's perspective on the processing side? Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CDPHC, regulates this. So you've got two different departments that are, that are regulating this, and they're required to have a wholesale food license, wholesale food manufacturing license from CDPHC, and they have to be compliant with those regulations. And, but they're not required to test. They don't have to test for, for pesticide solvents or potency or any of that. But because of SBE 19240, local jurisdictions can adopt ordinances, again, regulating only the storage, the extraction, processing, or manufacturing of the hemp. Food and cosmetics are not considered adulterated in Colorado. We treat these as a food ingredient or a nutritional supplement. So that's why Colorado can have it on our shelves. It's, it's okay to sell. The CDA, CDPHC, State Med, and the hemp industry have been meeting quite a bit in the last few months. The State Med really doesn't want to have a lot to do with this. They've got their own problems. But the problem is, is that when it tests hot, it becomes marijuana, and so they have to be involved with this process. And the industry doesn't want it to be regulated very heavily. They want to go about their business. It's easier to get into. That's why a lot of these people from, that are in the marijuana business, they've switched over to the hemp business because it's not as regulated, and it's a lot easier to get into. And so the CDA, the CDPHC, along with the Med and the industry, those have, those folks have to decide what this landscape is going to look like. And they're going to do this through the rulemaking process in this late summer, early fall. Okay. Some things, we do have a hemp extraction in the city already, and, as well as some internet sales, and it's on the shelves in places throughout Aurora. I don't know if you've seen them or not. But what we're wondering is what, what is staff's responsibility for this? What, we're looking for some guidance from, from council, and we've identified four areas that we believe are of importance. One of them is the extraction machines need to be NRTL-recognized, standard operating procedures created and reviewed. This is kind of like our extractions that we have in marijuana. What we do is we make sure that they are fit together safely, that they're run, that they are maintained, and all that, so, because they can, it's the same machine that they're using for hemp, and so they could potentially blow up. So odor, council didn't want odor in the city, and so we wanted to say, okay, what should we do about the detectable odor? Location, where and if there should be setbacks? Where should hemp be allowed to be processed in the city or grown in the city? And oversight to ensure continued compliance? Let's see. Those are the areas that we kind of would, we would like to have some kind of suggestions from you now that you know what we, what's come out of the legislation. It's still kind of gray because they have to go through the rulemaking, but there are some things we, that we may or may not be able to do if we want to regulate hemp. And the question is, do you want to? This is what we typically see in the levels of the solvent. You've got butane and CO2 that are used in the marijuana extractions. You can see the cylinders there. We have a business that's coming in that is large. They are planning on having, those are the two, two, they each hold 5,000 liters of ethyl alcohol in there. It's a multimillion-dollar industry that is, or business that's coming in here. It's huge. And so we want to make sure that we have this, that those machines are, you know, operating properly, that I believe our building department has rules in place that would make this something that could be done in the city and safely. We have other things in the city that use this kind of stuff too, but there's no oversight on them. Usually when the building department goes out there and they, they do their inspections or whatever, after it's all said and done, they never go back to make sure that they are operating separately or the way they should. However, they have other, other types of businesses or, or organizations like oil and gas, they'll be monitoring those things. These guys will, do not have that. And so we, we think that they should be looked at. These are the small, smaller type of extraction machines that we have right now for marijuana. So you can see the size of those. This is what's going in in that building. That is like one of the hoppers where they're going to put, put the, the product in, and then it goes into, as you can see, this particular one. They're huge. Steve, do you know how many?
There's, there's five cylinders.
Five cylinders in there? And how much are they going to hold?
They can run about 2,500 pounds an hour. It's a continual flow.
Yeah. And they want to run 24/7. And so what we are asking is, can we, can we have some oversight on this? And can we have, make sure that these, these, this hemp industry is operating safely and have some way to have oversight on them without making it overly regulated and staying within the confines of what the state allows us to do?
Okay, let's go to questions. Councilmember Watson.
Yes, a quick question. I noticed on your staff requests or concerns, I did not see any additional staff. So staff that you have currently, is that enough to increase with another industry?
I'm not sure. Depends on how many new ones we would get in. I'm seeing, we have about three extractions right now. Two, two of them are fairly large. One of them is already operating. We've been able to take that in, but, yeah, I mean, it's going to put a strain on us.
I'd probably add with that too, that a little credit to Robin and her staff is, could be on the timing, and two, I think even if council were to authorize additional staff, it's a highly technical piece to be able to do. To his credit, Steve has gone out and become an expert in this and really understands the industry and what you need to look for. So while I'd love to replicate his brain and be able to transplant that into someone else, I don't think it's quite as easy as that. So it's, it's a difficult thing. It's a very good question, but it, I think it's, it's, it's like Robin said, I don't think we know how many are going to come in, and then the other, even more than that, it's when they're going to come in. If we got three of, three more all at one time, that would probably be a really difficult lift. If we got three over a year, I think they'll probably manage that.
Councilmember Bergen.
And then, besides additional staff to, to regulate, monitor all of this, from a police and fire perspective, how, how, I mean, I guess I was reading in the backup of the minutes from the last meeting that there were some real concerns.
Fire perspective, excuse me. My name's Steve Clark. I'm building inspection supervisor. I'm also a certified extractor.
When I said he's an expert, I meant it.
I'm certified in every marijuana machine that we have, CO2, VHO, ethyl alcohol, short film, short path, falling film. I only have three left, I'm sorry. I didn't realize there was that many people. But we do have, we do have some experts here. I'm teaching one of my inspectors how to do this. We use, we utilize a little bit of, we, we put, the building department goes out and basically looks at all these things to make sure that we're maintaining a safe operation. An SOP is required on, on the application for permit, and we look at that standard operating procedure, and we vet it out. Do we see if there's any, if there's any open venting? If we're going to have solvent that's going to be vented to atmosphere, we, we account for all that. We look at the process, how big is it? And this one's a 26, I, so to convert 10,000 liters into, into English, we're at 2,641 gallons of ethyl alcohol. Ethyl alcohol, I misquote and said it was rocket fuel, and in reality, it's drag race fuel, so we're good. So just think about this, every time you go to the gas station, you're opening up and you're venting a combustible liquid to the atmosphere. All right? This system here does not do that. They drain it completely, and then if they got to clean it, they get in and they clean it with a different solvent. So the ventilation rate, the, the classified area that it is, it's a hazardous location because it exceeds minimum standards, or maximum standards for regular businesses that have hazardous material in it. The NFPA and the International Fire Code allow 350 gallons of, of a combustible liquid inside a building that's sprinkled and has an, has an explosive cabinet is what they're called. This business is going to be in H2 occupancy, which the type of construction it is means it's resistant to, not necessarily resistant to explosion, but it's prepared for it. So there's a ventilation rate where we have air exchanges six times an hour. There's, there's flammable or hydrocarbon detection, not hydrocarbon, but there's gas detection basically to see if there's a combustible vapor in the air. And it's really, these guys are kind of high-tech, but the one downfall here is that it's Chinese. I hate to say it, it doesn't have an NRTL. I put in my point, I says, you got to get a third-party listing on this. Now, NRTL stands for Nationally Recognized Testing Laboratory. There's only 13 of them in the country. UL is one of them, ETS, CES, all those. These are the testing laboratories that we're looking to get these people to, to get certified in so that we know that the pressure vessels and tanks are all rated and can withstand, withstand the heat, basically. There's one steam generator in this thing that heats the jacket of the reactor that is UL-listed. It has a, it's, it's a piece of approved equipment. Through, the building departments, is, this actually is still in the correction because they can't account for some ventilation rate, and there's some, there's some issues with the ethanol and how much you're going to have to it. This hopper here, I don't want to go into too much detail, but basically what... This hopper here, I don't want to go into too much detail, but basically, the important part for us as a building department and as the marijuana enforcement division and now hemp is to be able to get inside here and to verify that their SOP is being maintained. During the process, when they do this, when they start making it, they follow a rule or set track, basically, but they find a shortcut. So they're going to vary from that shortcut, and that could be hazardous and dangerous. Those are the things that Robin and I, excuse me, and Councilmember Roth are absolutely worried about. This is not a, that was something that we were concerned about. Anyway.
So we're getting really far into the weeds here.
Sorry, I apologize.
Let's try to rein this in and see if council agrees that we should have staff do further work on these machines, the odor, the setbacks, the oversight, and look at staffing and how we pay for that through the fee. Councilmember Gruber.
And that fee is a very important part. This is, I'm thinking about what we did in oil and gas, where we created an operator agreement that went through many of the similar issues, not identical, obviously, because we're talking to, but the idea of an operator agreement that goes into that detail and specifically ensures that the city assumes no cost. But one of the other areas you brought up was the quality of the CBD and whether it was dangerous and the home rule responsibilities that we levy. So given the fact that we have home rule responsibility over it and the chemicals, the CBDs are taken out, and if CBD made somebody sick, is that, this is where I lost you, that's CDPHD's responsibility, but is it our responsibility as well? Is that something we should be concerned about?
No, because we don't have the resources to do that.
Well, I didn't say that. I said, did we, under that new law, do we have the responsibility? I understand the resources part, but the way you talked about the law is that we might, as a home rule city, we might have the responsibility for that.
Well, what happens if something were to, something was wrong with, you know, somebody got sick? And so they use the, whatever, they can trace that back, and they can say, okay, they have to be concurrent with the wholesale food regulations, and one of those regulations is to have it tested. So basically, it is being tested, but they don't say, come out and say hemp has to be tested through this avenue. And so it kind of, they'll get you when something bad happens.
Okay, so my point, two points. Number one, this should have no cost to the city. Number two, customer safety, citizen safety should be something that we consider in the list of things that we look at.
So is council okay with this moving forward for further staff work on coming up with a regulation, I'll call it, covering these items, the extraction, regulation of the machines, the odor, the setbacks, oversight, and proper staffing and restructure? And I presume that, do we want that to go to the ad hoc committee? Or is that a PD? Well, first, let's see if council is okay with staff continuing to work on this. Let's see, show of hands, let's say we need, yes, staff do more work on this. Where should this go?
We were already trying to find a date that works for the three committee members, but, you know, so I don't know what the will of council is, if it's a redtail hog or a hog or an ad hog.
Does council want this to go to the amendments 64 ad hoc? Is there any problem with using that group? I mean, it's similar, even though it's not the same. Okay, council's okay with that? All right. So this would be something staff works on internally, looks at these issues we've discussed, and then take it to the ad hoc committee and bring it back to study session. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Fitzsimmons Stormwater Outfall Project update. We're going to have a quick overview of that project.
Good evening, council. Ma'am, my name is Suvin Nyaranda, and what I have before you is an IGA between the FRA and the city. And this is with regards to funding of Work Package 2 and 3. Now, what we have here is two projects. We, the city, is doing the pipeline, and we sized our pipeline for Work Packages 2 and 3 to convey flows from the FRA. And then the FRA is constructing a regional pond, we call it Ursula Pond, to the bottom of the screen there. And the city has an obligation in the pond to pay for some structures, for some concrete work. So what this IGA does is just basically reconcile the funding obligations by either entity. So what I have there in the red is for Work Package 2, the FRA owes us 700,000, 780,000. Then Work Package 3, FRA owes us about 1 million for that. And then for the pond, we owe the FRA 700,000. So what the IGA does is just make a net of all these monies and obligations, and it would end up being that the FRA would pay the city $1 million for this work. So my question to council is, do you support taking this IGA to a regular session?
Ready to move forward?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. And next item is the Sand Creek Baron Moore Ditch at Zaya.
Good evening. So, thank you. This one will be really brief because there's this one and there are three additional amendments for urban drainage on regular session tonight. I just did a quick overview of the types of agreements that we have. Just a reminder, there are some agreements where we are managing the project and they're paying us. Some projects that they are managing the project and we're paying them. And then some projects, well, kind of one project now where we're kind of jointly doing a savings account to be able to afford it. And so we'll figure out who's going to be managing that one later when it comes up. Again, we do master planning projects that urban drainage almost always leads, and those are either master drainage plans or OSPs. So the Baron Moore Ditch project, there is an OSP or an outfall systems plan done in 2009, identified maybe a half a dozen projects along the Baron Moore Ditch. And in that, there are two culverts that need to be upsized, and I'll show you a picture of those, but they're the last ones to be constructed along this ditch. What we want to take a look at, though, is we have $100,000 that each of us are contributing for this project. And what we want to do is study it a little closer to make sure that it's actually necessary to build those culverts. So here's where Baron Moore Ditch basin is, the part that is the clear part of the aerial. It's between I-70 and Sand Creek. And here is just a little comparison of the Baron Moore Ditch. On the upper left-hand side is the flood plain as it used to be before we did a lot of the projects along there that are already complete. The flood plain, as you can see, is kind of, has reduced to take a bunch of properties out of it. However, this section right here did not have an identified flood plain, so we want to just take a closer look at it to see. We know those culverts are undersized based on criteria, but we don't know exactly what that flooding looks like. I want to see how high above the road the flooding is, or if the flooding is actually getting into those properties before we spend a couple of million dollars to fix those. So we're going to look at that a little more closely. If it does appear that there is flooding that is a safety concern, then we would move forward with the design and construction of those projects.
We have a question.
Councilmember Bergen. Is there, so if you determine it's not hot, the water's not high enough to have to do the culverts at that cost, is there another alternative option you would look at?
Yeah, so it would be, it's basically a cost-benefit analysis to understand. So if the water's going over the roadway every 100 years by an inch, then that might just be, you know, there's not a lot of risk there, so it would be something that we would just allow to happen. Yeah.
Is there more?
No, that was it. Yeah, so this can move forward to regular?
Any further questions? Just ready to move to the agenda? Okay, thank you. Next item is item 3E, and this is the, this is the hot topic of campaign financing. And it's my understanding that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Johnson, it's your intent to move this forward to agenda regardless of the outcome in this study session? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I just say that because, you know, I'm going to give everyone a chance to talk, but we'll talk about it again at the next meeting on 24th. So any comments or questions or points someone would like to make now? Okay, and I think I'm leaving it at that since it was so well-publicized in the MNF minutes and the Aurora segment. So this will be on the agenda on the 24th. Next item is 4A, the Airtroplos Regional Transportation Authority update. Jason's still here?
We both thought we had 40 minutes.
You want to show ahead and give us the update? There's actually two items here. One is 4A and 4B that are related, so let's just put them together.
I think I was set up by Mr. Bashler. It's a very simple amendment to the IGA, the establishing agreement. When it was created, it didn't envision every possibility, and there was one piece that had to do, the timing of when payment was to be due from both Adams County and Aurora, and we agreed upon 60 days. So it's a very straightforward amendment. Any questions?
Any questions on that item? And that's, I think you're talking about 4B. 4A, they're ready. Is there any update other than what we heard that they issued bonds? No?
Well, that's the urgency for this IGA is to support the bonds happening. I believe that that is happening in the next day or two.
So if I could, councilor, quick, one of the first things they'll do once the bonds are issued and an income comes in is to buy back the debt that they already have, which will reduce the cost to the ARTA significantly.
Any questions on this item? It'll be moving forward to the agenda on June 24th. Any objections?
Actually, we have this dual-listed.
Oh, it's dual-listed? Oh, I didn't see that. Oh, it does.
And it does have a waiver request as well because of the urgency for the bonds. Thank you.
That's on the agenda tonight. Thank you very much. Okay, updates from City Council, CML, Mayor Per Kamron.
No report.
Legislative update, Councilmember Richardson.
Nothing to report, ma'am.
Dr. Cog, Mayor Per Kamron.
No report.
Some jury development authority has not met again. E470 updates, Councilmember Bergen. Aurora Economic Development, Councilmember Burden.
I have no update for tonight.
Any Accelerate Colorado update?
We have our launch get-together this Wednesday. The itinerary is already set and ready to go for us when we go next Tuesday to Washington. We'll be receiving the trip app in the coming days. I know what that means. And that's all I have. Mayor, are you going?
Sister Cities update, Councilmember Gruber.
We are very, very close to closing the list of people who can go to Japan for the sister cities. This is going to be a very important trip. We're trying to identify a candidate that would become our Japanese sister city. We're going to fly into Narita, Tokyo, we're going to work our ways down to Osaka, meet at various different places. If you've ever wanted to travel to Japan and you were looking for a reason, this is the time to go. If you're interested, look at the Aurora Sister Cities webpage and contact Carl and Shore. Again, we're getting very close to closing the list. You're still welcome. The time is short.
Okay, and we're at the end here with, are there any call-ups, miscellaneous items, or anything else that council wants to bring up?
Did you skip visitor warrant?
Did I? I'm sorry. I did, jumped right over.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richardson, sorry about that.
Visitor War is going to be publishing and rolling out their new webpage, and we at the committee got a good presentation, and we thought unless there's an objection from all of council, that it'd be previewed for all of council at a study session. It was pretty interesting. It's a good idea.
Sounds good. For Watson.
Just a brief ask of Mr. Gruber. In reference to the oil and gas, two openings that are going to be coming up, I would hope that they will be well-publicized so we can get more people that would apply, in this case, that qualify. So maybe he can work with the qualifications and get that information out to the public. That's my suggestion.
I think they do what they can to get that out. I think it's up to us around this table to try to recruit people to put their names in for that and help get the word out for other people to try and recruit applicants. Any other comments or updates or other items that councilmen would like to bring up? Okay, hearing none, we're on the floor at 7:30.